...the meeting of the subcommittee on property. And we're going to start with the horticulture project. And again, an update from our architects, Dietz and company. Kevin in Shelby, is that right? Thank you. So why don't we jump right in and let Kevin?
Okay. So after the last meeting, we saw that our new building approach with the larger program was way more expensive than what we could kind of figure for the project. And so we were given the direction to, one, reduce the program and to look at reuse of the existing building.
Correct.
And so that's kind of where we're at right now, is looking at different options for how we could do that or not.
And let me jump in a second on what's the budget we're working with, Kevin?
My understanding it's 4.9 million.
Correct, thereabouts.
Yep. So that's where we're trying to get to. You know, it's complex in nature as all these building projects are. So we provide the program, so it's going to be what you've set to us and what we agreed on. And we have a J-C-Z diagram to go with that, just to make sure that we're keeping up to date. This is the existing building plan for building B. We wanted to try to show this to show what is here right now. I mean, when this building was built, it was kind of assembled from a bunch of different buildings that were in different locations on the land and kind of brought and relocated to the place where it is now and assembled with connectors of CMU walls. You know, and this is back in the 1970s. So it's, as you know, probably not the greatest structure and, you know, it's been updated, to be kind, over the years to, you know, to assume the role that you kind of needed to be, which is, you know, classrooms and garage space and storage. So just to look at the building. So we have a garage space out here, then two classroom spaces. I think this is an electrical room here and a storage room. And then back here, we have some toilet rooms and a little hallway connecting the two classrooms. So when we, you know, first looked at this building, we're trying to figure out, how do we turn this into a modern, you know, building where you can get from one place to another? And so, you know, we put that, you know, kind of this as being like, you know, that would do that. This is being kind of a spine of the building to get us from this side to this side without taking up too much space in these front areas. And that's kind of where we started off with some of these ideas. So you can kind of see here, the greenhouse remains and then this is the area of existing building that stays. And then we have some addition to the west side, addition to the east. And trying to stay within, being just kind of approximately within the existing site area so that we're not, you know, messing too much with the roadways, you know? And, you know, looking at this as a way to try and not spend more money, you know, to, you know, making these things around on the site as much as we can. This one does have benefit of like keeping its transformer, which feeds out not just to this building but to the building M, which is the one down the hill, and then I think to some other spaces as well. You can correct me if I'm wrong on that, but that was my understanding.
Just for a point of reference, Kevin, just for the best, the, this particular option one, the classroom space, that is where the current storage barn is, correct? Would be taking that barn down?
This, yes, that's correct.
Okay. Just as a reference.
Yep. Yep. So I think, you know, all of them, we're trying to stay away from the greenhouse, you know, that does require sun, so the closer we go to that, the less sunny it's going to get. We are leaving a little space here. This is on the west side, so, you know, I think they'll have to look at this a little bit further. These are really conceptual ideas, but, you know, we'll have to do, you know, later on, sun studies will have to be done to make sure that you're giving the proper sunlight to that building. Same thing with this, you know, this is going to be somewhat creating shadow, but, you know, we can adjust angles. And once we get some more defined, like, information on the building and site, we can do a better job with moving things around. But these are more like ideas to explore right now, just to get your thoughts on them. This one does have the ability to like create a simple geometry here and simple geometry here, kind of keep them separated so that we're not intersecting roofs, which, you know, might not go together well. That was kind of the idea behind this one, trying to keep this isolated. And the idea here would, you know, ideally, we would like to like leave that alone as much as possible. But I think, you know, between creating the corridor, updating the bathrooms, and then also updating the NEP and fire protection systems that would need to be in there, you know, there's not a lot left at the end of the day. And so, all right, so this one uses up more footprint.
She belongs to that ten minute?
We did, I put together some ideas for cost. You know, these are really rough, so please don't take them too seriously until we start getting an estimator to look at them. These are just ideas and, you know, we're in the four and a half to the upper five million dollar range for this particular one. And we just kind of assigned the same cost per square foot for the building, whether it's renovated or new, just thinking that we'd have to do quite a bit of work on the inside of that existing building to make it both code compliant and work functionally for you.
So just as a point of reference, Kevin, I, thank you for the estimated building costs. Any other costs are on top of that, sir?
Yeah. These, you know, this is the building area, so just assigned the cost per square foot as well.
Does it all have a week and a half minutes?
Tim, you're good at that.
Well, it's just that I have ideas to go on the wire.
And then these are some additional costs that would be over and above the basic building cost. Once again, estimated. You know, I'm not exactly sure, you know, I have an idea of what utilities might be. You know, we're going to have to go, if we want us to be on a gas, a natural gas system, we're going to have to go get that. I don't think it's very close to this building right now. It's, I forget what the building name is or the building number, but between building B and one, that's along the street from building C. Yeah, I'm not sure if you could tap off of that line going to the old red building, if that's enough supply or if we'd have to come up by the other end. Yeah, I don't mind that. I know maybe this is not, not, where is the boiler room in this? Or is that just more detail? Would be more, you know, there is some space kind of left in there for like circulation and bathrooms and utility rooms. And we probably will have to work that in. It would be nice if it was in the middle here and we could just kind of branch out from that, just to kind of keep the lines as short as possible. So that's kind of where that one is. Any questions or comments on this one? This option, we're trying to be careful, just so we didn't have things, you know, flying out from the building too far. This one, you know, we'll, you know, we'll have to deal with the roof intersections a little bit more. And, you know, this one, we're trying to put things so that you don't get as much parking in the front here for that retail, retail function that you want to have. And, but, you know, it's, I think, you know, this one and the one before this, you know, they're not bad options, but, you know, they do have a, you know, when you're looking at the overall program for the building, because there's inefficiencies, because we're using the existing building, that adds to the cost because there's a higher square footage toward the building. So this one, we, you know, we get the greenhouse with keeping the spaces tight, tight with and still get southern exposure for that building. You know, there is a possibility that will be shadowed a little bit. Yes, exactly the way it is. This would require relocation of the transformer. Yeah. As I said before, you know, we're probably working at just redoing the entire mechanical equipment and fire protection system for the building. So, you know, even within trying to create the program or space configurations, you know, we're not going to spend a lot of money on this. There's not a huge benefit to that existing building. Given what it is, which is CMU walls, you know, maybe wood studs, it's not, probably not the most energy efficient structure either. So, you know, that's kind of the last option. And these are the costs for this. It's a little bit lower than the first option, just because the space is a little bit tighter and we're able to make those square footage a little bit smaller.
Are these last, the first two options, does that take down what's here, what we saved or use it?
The first two options to keep what we, keep what is here now.
Yes, or?
So the costs are a little bit better here. You still have the additional costs that, you know, are estimated right now. Maybe we can do better. Maybe we, they might be worse until I can get an estimate on it. You know, these are my best guesses. And I don't want to, I don't want to like gloss over, you know, costs because everything is really expensive right now. And I'm hoping I'm guessing right. All right. So this is the other option, which is basically to tear down what's there now, start over, try and keep it as simple as possible, you know, making, you know, basically it's a rectangle with the greenhouse off the one side. We'd have to build that as new also. We may be able to reuse the controls if it makes sense, but hard to say right now. So this has a much simpler circulation system and I think you could probably get what you want. It's, like I said, it's a tighter building and so we end up with a little bit lower construction costs for the building. There might be a little bit higher demolition costs, obviously, with taking down the rest of the building. And, but I think that the, you know, the site costs will probably be comparable with the other two and the other costs as well. So, I mean, that's kind of where it is right now. I guess I'd use a little bit of direction on, you know, what you think, you know? And Rick, you know, I know you've been through building projects like this a million times, so, you know, any input on costs or?
Well, I'm not really in touch with today's cost and all the others.
No, I'm sure, yeah. But you've experienced price hikes in your, in your, in your, this is a whole new world, obviously, you know? When I was in business.
So Kevin, just one question. You answered on option one and two, the ramp. I was trying to figure out how we were doing this with the change of elevation. Option three, if you went with option three, is there a ramp? It's not in one of the bullets.
Yeah, there would be a ramp. We have all this at one height. We just, you know, kind of, this side would have to build it out above the grade a little bit. So when we show a door here, you know, there would have to be something, you know, where that door would exit, head on to, to get to a normal grade level or a stair down to the floor level. Yeah, so it's simplified to go in that way as well.
In option, the footprint of option two, if we were able to move with a pull down and build almost a footprint of option two, would you see that price go down where you would suspect?
Price go down?
Yeah, you have it at 5.6. Would you also, similar to the third option, would you see the overall construction go down and then?
Well, the benefit to this one is that real simple rectangle space that basically we create a single gable root structure. You know, maybe we could get a metal building to work, you know, to enclose this.
So not necessarily, even though it'd be new?
Correct. Yeah. Yeah, just because the foundation walls are more complicated and, you know, just the building circulation wouldn't be quite as efficient.
That's a thousand square feet less, yet we're getting the same.
Same program.
Time. I'd love to hear from you two. My initial, I had just a few hours to look at the other three options, and I, my initial thought was I like one and two. I like components of one, too. I guess overall, I kind of like, I was leaning towards option two in that I'm thinking of the use of the space in loud slash dirty space versus quiet and clean space. And I really like the concept that the three classes are relatively together and separate from the garage noisy space. I kind of like that concept. I liked option one in that almost the garage space could have been, hypothetically, could be a separate building.
Yes, yes. Yeah, I mean, we're showing indoor circulation just because that's kind of what you expect in New England. But, you know, it could be a covered walkway or, you know, even a shielded walkway as well.
And option two, option two would allow the rest rooms in your office space to be close to the classrooms. Could we pull the garage space out like we had in option one?
Yes.
Like a high beam?
Yeah.
Look at it, two menus versus the other than initial.
I like what you said, Andy, about the two different spaces from my perspective. I mean, if we were going to drill down into where things are located, I think I'd want the office space more centrally located near the front door, almost as a, to be able to get to either space, any of the spaces quickly and for command and control, but...
Yeah. I mean, I think that we can take option three and make that happen within a simpler building and gain the cost savings of doing a simpler structure plus get a lower operating cost because, you know, getting much more efficient system building. You know, I think that we just laid out the spaces just to, you know, fit it and, you know, this is kind of the minimum square footage that we can get with that particular program. Now, we can, we can divide it up in a better way if we need the functionality that goes before.
And what is this space? Is this just empty lobby space?
It's an entrance.
Okay. So we could even minimize that and just as needed?
It could be minimized and/or, you know, create a hallway out the back because I know there's probably a strong need for a connection through.
I like the retail and the head house and the greenhouse on one side. It's, if you would almost make it three components, you know, you could have the greenhouse, head house, retail, classrooms, clean space, dirty space.
Just thinking of the future and expansion with the amount of more students we're going to bring out. And when we're in this, looking at this whole big picture, I like three because it is going to help carry that load, you know, more people. And even though you're still continuing to have space the best you can, I think for the future, we need to look at modernization a little bit and still try to contain costs. But I like, I like the way you bring that coming around.
Yeah. Well, we also wanted to consider expandability for this building. I think that, you know, because we're such, in such a limited space, we don't get a lot of opportunity to do that. But, you know, this does have some space to roll out into. You'd have to change the site around a little bit. And, you know, because we're building out into the, into the hill on the east side here, you know, possibly we could put a basement that can contain other classrooms, but, you know, they'd be separated and they wouldn't have that same vertical connection that you'd need in a modern building.
I don't know how much parking we need for retail space. I don't envision a lot of cars coming and going, but I'd like to see the idea of an outdoor project space similar to plumbing's, where you can do patios and things. So I don't know if some of that could be repurposed. It appears like, I know it's not the scale, but we would gain a lot by that storage barn leaving, the way you have option three laid out, and that might have the opportunity for more outdoor, dedicated outdoor project space that might have a minimal cost. Plumbing has a giant fake foundation sand that they do a lot of digging and laying a pipe in as if it was, you know, piping in concrete or anything. So, but I don't know if it's something similar to be, probably.
Yeah. I mean, we try not to touch the roadways as much as we put here just to, you know, avoid a bit from a cost. But, you know, this road could be straightened out. This could be made into a kind of a workspace there. You know, this, I don't know if the parking for the retail, obviously that'd be ideal, having it right here, but, you know, we can move that as well. You know, this area is hard just because it's down, it's like 10 feet of elevation change between the floor height and what the grade would be on the hill. I think there's opportunities, you know, especially on the backside here for moving that road. You just have to kind of modify like how you use the land right now.
Well, in terms of cost, option three is cheap, that's right.
Option three is still expensive.
Yeah. And Andy, I appreciate your thoughts. Andy and I met earlier today and talking about isolating the garage from this, but anytime we create a separate structure, we're going to increase more cost due to the exterior walls and that. A concern earlier with option three was the garage being close to the classroom spaces. So if we move forward into some sense of option three, we want to do some sound attenuation in some sort. Any thoughts there?
I think that we could separate them pretty easily, you know? Like I was saying earlier, I think that there's a, probably a need to have a front-to-back, you know, passageway. And we could create, you know, we could, you know, bring that entrance, you know, narrow it a little bit from what it is now, bring it through where that large classroom is and kind of modify the plan a little bit to make that work, creating that separation within the plan.
Do you think option three gives you the opportunity for four classrooms?
I think for four classrooms?
Yeah, based on?
I think we could...
Entrance space or availability, but maybe not that much more cost?
Yes.
Mark, you have something to say?
Well, I mean, I was thinking for us, closeness of the classrooms and the garages are not going to be, really be an issue sound-wise, because we're not going to be in the classrooms and in the garage at the same time mostly. You know, we'll be related and stuff and then, then we would be using the garage or something. I mean, three, theoretically, if you were to switch the whole project repair and the large classroom, that moves one of the garage spaces away from the classrooms. So the classrooms are the far end. That would help a little, but honestly, a huge need to, I mean, I understand that cleanliness and the noise and stuff from the others, it does make more sense. I don't think it would be as big of an issue as...
Yeah. I mean, the only caveat would be if we were able to get in three or four classrooms, there might be other programs that utilize the classroom space.
Correct. And then I know it's conceptual, but, but the head house in three is mighty small compared to what it should be.
I think, you know, these are just diagrams that we can manipulate to, you know, make things meet your needs better.
Right. And three, in fact, it's Marky a point. I think that half the reason why the head house is relatively small in three, it's incorporating a hallway that divides the retail and head house. But hypothetically, that could be one open space, correct?
You could.
Get rid of the hallway. Now you have the open space, how you subdivide the open space into a retail or a person head house, maybe more flexibility.
Some schools have used like a double-sided flower cooler as divider, so.
Makes sense.
And it makes a visual barrier between the two. That's not a wall that you have to build.
Yeah, as long as we have the egresses in the right place, then we could make that under one space.
So three gives us the most possibilities for the best cost.
Best building, best operating costs.
Additional demo costs. I would appear as to have to have another $120,000 a demo, which closes the gap a little bit.
Again, it's also a little less square footage. But you get a new greenhouse out of it, right?
Yes.
Is there any potential of dismantling existing and moving?
It's a steel structure. You just take it off the foundation and put it back down. It's a new foundation. It's a giant erector said it's not. I agree. I mean, someone who would have to move would probably speak better than I could about it, but. I'm assuming we're including the greenhouse square footage in these costs, right?
That's actually in the square footage range, yeah.
So be a bit of a savings if we're able to save the existing greenhouse.
Whenever you have to take something apart, be careful with it.
Let's do the job.
No, I'll just put a big hook on it, pick it up, just put it over there. I'll call the guy, if we had a guy come in for a quick test, I'll ask, I'll ask him what, because he's something he worked on, he'd be able to give us a pretty good estimate.
Yeah, three, I guess, I'm curious, back to the elevation. Mark, you had a good idea, just flop into large classroom in that or project space. But just the elevation, those would have to be on the ground elevation to, so you can bring here, it's like the garage door. How does that compare to the classrooms on this front wall?
The closer the garages are to the greenhouse, the more they are actually constructed, maybe it's there.
Correct.
Further you go.
You have to get down.
Right. So you wouldn't have to worry about if the classroom's at the far end, because you don't have to have, to get equipment out.
Yeah. I mean, if we are down the hill a bit, you know, we can build a retaining wall, you know, to bring the grade up there a little bit.
So if we build, if, say this was all one level without, that means you're built, we have to build up above it, but that would give us access storage, maybe that could only be access from outside the building, so you have to get out and go around. Could you have?
Your basement under the classroom.
A basement storage underneath the classroom. Say the classrooms were in that, that far corner. As it is, if you built it at one level, right, then that means as it goes down, we've gained, do we gain some sort of basement storage, just that end of the?
Yeah, it's not free.
That could be accessed around.
It's not free, but it's, it's a, you know, and it could be something to build out later too, you know, if you did the insulation right.
Yeah, but maybe it could be incorporated and then...
Yeah, because if you pour it in the concrete, you know, so you can fill it.
Because you are going to lose storage by taking that barn down.
Oh, absolutely. Right. So, I mean, even if it was 10 feet deep.
Just seasonal storage.
You know, we could put all of our tools in there. You know, nothing that major that requires to be inside or needs heat or anything like that.
All the seasonal stuff that you rotate through.
Right.
Access to the basement through all your garage doors. The garage doors would be at ground elevation. Your shop space, the garage space on the back end has to be down at the ground, so you can drive tractors in.
Right.
But then the front of the building, where right now classroom one and classroom two are, could be higher, which gives you that basement elevation.
Right. Well, this would all be at one, one.
Right. If you made that all at one level, we're just talking off the left end there. So off the left end where the ground slopes down, if you had an entry into like a basement space for storage.
Maybe, maybe we're struggling, so if that's all one floor, what we're seeing is all one floor.
Right, you know, a basement level storage space.
Those two garages that are facing the back.
Yep.
In order to be on the same elevation as the headhouse, greenhouse and everything, we're going to be off the ground, then ground drops.
Does that we have to build the ground up?
Right.
Or we don't build the ground up. That remains one elevation, but as the ground drops, underneath classroom one and two is, you actually have space technically above ground. That could become your basement that you access from your garage, because the garage, so maybe the garage floor and the classroom floor is at two elevations.
If we did that, then there have to be ramps inside the building, which would. We'd have to work out, we'd have to take a look at them to see if it would lose space because of that.
Either adding a ramp inside or basing up the ground outside.
Yes, we could take a closer look at the elevations to see what they are. I mean, I think it may be a little bit lower, you know, in this area, but it does drop off once you get down into this area.
Similar to the space, when we went to Vermont to check out that tech school, that was a similar concept. The garage is like a lower elevation, you came in and went downstairs into the garage.
Yeah, and then, but there could be, at the egress there, we could build an ramp outside that allows access up and down instead of stairs.
Yes, I mean, you need the accessibility inside the building.
Right, but if, I'm saying if it's at one level.
Yeah.
Then the ramp, it can be outside that allows access in versus stairs.
Yeah, I, I think that we can, we can look at it and see how best it works out, because, I mean, if we can avoid ramps, that would be helpful. Or even floor level changes, just because they start complicated things. You know, it would be nice if we could like keep, you know, classroom areas at a certain structural height. And we're able to get a bigger structural height for those garage spaces. We can look at that further and, you know, it seems like a good idea to try to do that and to work with the grade, so we're not manipulating it too much.
Because option three's gonna, I think it's what you're saying, option three where you have the back garages, there's going to be a significant elevation change. That we're going to have to build up.
I'm saying don't build it up. That's going to gain you basement space underneath classroom one and two.
Right.
That you gain access to through your garage space.
Right.
So the interior building is all one elevation is all. But your garages would have to be lower to match the grade, otherwise we're really, as you said, we're going to have to build up the grade.
Yeah, because.
That would just, that would just give us higher ceilings in the garages.
Which is what you want.
Correct.
Right, so you'd have to do, similar to what we used to have stairs going into that garage.
Right.
It was like a six-foot drop.
You have to gain access to the garage inside.
Right, he was saying we have to have an indoor ramp.
For accessibility, you can't have people going out and going in a back entrance, that's to be incredible.
It's like. Tucked against the wall.
Well, I was thinking, do they have these smaller plates? Well, now let's go up and down six feet versus an enclosed elevator, they have a ramp that moves up and down. Would that count? That you could wheel, put a wheelchair on it?
A wheelchair lift?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think, you know, for accessibility, they're not, they're not favored, it's kind of like the last solution.
Right.
So if we can do it another way, so our ramp is better for them.
Ramp for a regular elevator?
Well, we don't want the regular elevator.
Right.
If you're only going six feet, you don't want a full elevator, I mean, that's what I'm thinking, a wheelchair might. If that was feasible, but it sounds like a ramp is what we would have to go.
Yeah, we can take this back and take another, another look at.
Ramps are a combination and everything can use and you're not doubling, you're not doubling space.
Well, one of the things you asked about our, our thoughts. If you were to keep the indoor practice space close to a classroom. What we use right now is the front classroom in the building, have a door that's adjacent to where kids go and work in sandbox in the winter. It's ideal for a teacher and students without flow and management back and forth. So this last design you have where the classroom is close to the project space, you know, across the hall, that allows that. Like supervision and flow to still kind of happen. So even if you like switch the large classroom, put it on the corner and move the project space close to the greenhouse so that elevation isn't much of a change. It would still allow for a classroom to access, you know, one of the larger spaces. So that was kind of handy with a tiny building as you, you were very close to the kids, which makes it helpful to.
I think the only thing is if you switch the project space in the large classroom, you now lose the underground, the storage under the smaller classrooms.
Oh no, it could be under all the classrooms, you just have to access from outside, be a larger basement. I assume it'd be easier, it'd be cheaper to have a classroom above a basement than a floor that's got to support heavy equipment?
Yeah, absolutely.
I think if you, back to the concept drawings, if, if we're looking at three and we're all in favor of it, we like the idea of a new complete building, if we can afford it. I think the clustering, to your point earlier, we can cluster things how we want it. So if you wanted three classrooms sort of wrapped around and pride indoor project space, repair space, I think that we, you know, we might be able to make that work on a corner and then add that in. And then you have the, you know, the, the garages and the other things, and then that moves over to the next space, which is the greenhouse and the retail and the headhouse. You almost create that, that cluster of activities that you want. Because to your point, James, if, once we go to this rectangle, it's not going to be like it was where you're close to everything. We're going to have to pick what makes the most sense to be close to at a time. But we would have flexibility of clustering certain things.
Yeah, this floor plan was just a.
I think the other thing.
Putting here to show us square footage and that we could fit it into this space.
The, the other thing would be, in my head. Would it, how feasible would it be to take the office, put it kind of vertically between the two smaller classrooms? Slide the classroom two over and put the two bathrooms into the entry?
Yeah.
That way, you know, we can be in the office, we can look into the classrooms, you know. So I could, you know, I could almost keep an eye, if I had to, on both classrooms, you know, if it came down to that.
If, if you did that, Mark, you could, the clustering, yeah, you could have classroom, office, classroom, and then on the other corner where the project space is, you could have the large classroom. And then directly across from your office and classroom two could be the project space and repair space. Shifts your tool cribs over, the two bay garage and the.
Yeah, I mean, that would make it, keep it a little separate for cleanliness and noise, but also allows better observation of everything.
What does that storage, Kevin, to the right of the entry, it's two, two letters in storage.
Headhouse.
Headhouse storage.
And then you'd have the main garage, two bay garage would be right next to the headhouse and greenhouse.
That's a higher elevation.
Higher elevation of the drug.
Right.
But a lower elevation in that project and repair bay shop, I mean, that's probably where you would want your climbing. So a higher roof would make more sense.
Right, so I mean, and if we were to, where the two bay garage, as you said, that slid to the left. And that's still set down for elevation, we'll have that, that could be like the project, one to get the higher roof, where the two bay garage would be where the large classroom is. Because that doesn't require as high of an elevation, uh, ceiling.
Yeah, your, your tool crib and that would all shift too.
Right, that would be between, the way it is now, you basically, you take, take out the large classroom, shift everything to the right towards the greenhouse and put the classroom in on the left.
Yeah.
Because I, I think that would give us everything that we're all.
Yeah, it would give you the three classrooms and the project and climbing space and all that.
Storage underneath the classroom two and then.
The three classrooms and the project place and the climbing all clustered and then the, the repair and garage and all that clustered.
Right.
Okay. Does the two bay garage solve?
Go ahead.
Tim's, Tim's request early on, which was a space for large equipment to be fixed on campus that we were going to need. I don't think that, this addresses that though.
Well, what I was going to say is, what I'm hearing is, we're kind of settling on this footprint and just moving space around. Don't necessarily know how the elevation's going to work in the basement or not, but these costs, what were you thinking for building construction type, Kevin? Is metal building?
That would be the best, yes.
I would think that'd be the most cost effective.
Metal stud sheet rock and metal building, maybe with a.
So I'm looking, looking at this, this, let's work with the four fifty at five point one essentially, and you got these add-on costs. We're, we're, we're going to be up around six in round numbers, is that something we can pull off?
Right now, based on the insurance settlements that we have, but both the structure and the equipment. On the two point one skills, two point one million dollar skills capital grant that we did receive. Allocate about six hundred thousand of that towards animal science innovations, which allows us to use that six hundred thousand, which we're evolving. Along with approximately thirty-nine thousand of cash donations that we received. And then fingers and toes and hair crossed that we received, the five million dollar capital, skills capital grant that has been written this week by Joe Melody. Hope we see more in December, if we receive that grant, if we do, that's about three and a half million that we can apply to the, the construction. Add all those numbers up, we're about five point four million. But again, that has, that means we're not buying any tools or equipment out of the insurance, which I think is doing pretty well right now with, with the grants. But it also means paying Kevin's firm right now for this work, the demolition has already occurred. Plus all the other costs that Kevin has already outlined.
Right.
It's tight, it's probably too tight, honestly.
Well, that's, that's what's, what's going around in my head. It's, we need to, I don't know, we've been pretty creative to date in terms of coming up with resources and money and shifting around ideas and, and spaces. And this seems to be the direction we need to go in, but.
I would be comfortable, if we're looking at six million ballpark. As close to a million, most likely, probably about a million dollars short at any rate.
Andy, what's the amount of money that's still parked, Joe come up for, trying to get out of that budget?
Two hundred and twenty-five thousand, which honestly, I don't see happening.
Yeah.
Can talk into the lobby, you have some of us hired, that's working on that particular bond bill, I think they'll come out. If it comes through, great, but. I guess one question for the full board, would be if we're looking at close to a million dollars, what does that look like internally from which we're evolving? What does that look like for a small bond, using the cell tower as potential revenue to help pay out the bond? We can't get much smaller, I mean, from a couple months ago, when we were looking at how many square footage, the building we were initially looking at, we have scaled this down a lot.
No, we were at thirty-one, I think, initially.
So we've come a long ways. The only addition, I believe, team, please correct me if I'm wrong, the only addition that we're seeing in this particular conceptual drawing in person, what you two had, is another classroom, correct? For me, just standing here to say, let's, let's get rid of that third classroom, I don't think would rely as educationally, I really do, we need that third classroom.
I don't need instructional space, absolutely. Okay, well, for the sake of today's meeting, where do we go from here? I mean, we seem to have come to conclusion, this is what we'd like to do, at least in my opinion, correct me if I'm wrong. And how do we get there? So we need to go back to the budget numbers or, and I, I was working with the four fifty. I was doing that, trying to be a realist in, in what we potentially are facing. Well, what are costs running today? I, I assume this is accurate information, three fifty, four fifty with today's school construction costs?
Just thinking about, you know, it's, it's probably not the most ideal construction for a high school building. But, you know, it's, it's something that's going to get you a building and we'll try and make it as durable as we can with, you know, lesser cost material.
What is the, when you're talking about steel or metal building? What's the frame work going to be?
Well, it can be wood, that wouldn't be the greatest, it'd be nice if it was non-combustible, you know.
I mean, is it, is it going to be? Steel that would support a fair amount of weight?
For what purpose?
Students climbing.
Yeah, I mean, we could build that in, you know, with metal buildings, you have the building.
Right, I didn't know if like the frame go up is going to be a steel girder, like frame that you didn't put in building, building material on. And if that was the case, that would help us a little bit, and what we want to do with the climbing is you can add to that without increasing the cost so much.
If we get the grant, we have that in as a separate.
Oh.
Okay.
Well, I mean.
Yeah.
Structure.
We have it in as a separate equipment, we have it listed as equipment. Uh, the one who built Bristol's is actually the same company in Northampton. So they gave us a, a cost estimate, but there would be additional costs if we just did the same amount of steel and size as Bristol. So if we changed the design a little, but we, we, we have that in the grant as a separate structure.
Right.
So it's not, it wouldn't be part of the construction cost.
No, I know, but if they, if we're, if they had the, the frame for like the project spaces has steel beams. We could probably add to that without maybe reducing the cost a little, without making it too expensive. Not, not talking about the building.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm just saying we could fish it to that so, to make it work to what we need.
It would just shift, you would shift the cost away from what we might be able to pay for the grant into what has to come out of the construction cost. And I would assume that you have to, that area is going to have to be engineered differently, because of different use.
I don't know, I mean, it's not, you're just talking about the weight of the steel, the rest of it would be natural.
Right. I didn't know if that'd make it cheaper for the structure to get both of it.
Yeah, but it's two pots of money, so we decrease one pot of money just to, so to speak.
I was going to ask, if the shell is up, how much student labor could be used for some interior framing or electrical? Are you possible at such a scale of a project? Visit the school, can they outbuild the buildings that students build? I'm sure they're not eleven thousand square feet per building, but they're decent sized to hold a chuck of seventy-four per minute.
They weren't that big, I mean, maybe double the White House down there. One floor.
Yeah, I mean, just with, with public construction projects, you know, I don't, contractors don't like to mix in, you know, they like to kind of get.
That's a good point, that's a good point, Kevin.
It's, folks, I've been contractors and want to get in and out. Folks, some of the contractors and they wanna get in and out, make it as efficient as possible, so you start complicating it. I think it just makes their cost a lot.
What, whoa, then, then there's the option, we get this, this metal building structure built and we go in and outfit it. We should, we get the building, we get the, the structure built, we take it from there.
It's the same concept that we're having with the big barn, the can house, just, just much bigger.
What is the timeline for a building this size with the demo of the existing and then to completion if it was all done?
A year, maybe a little bit more.
Twelve to eighteen months? That would say, yeah, okay. I'm just thinking, obviously having to find a new home and deal with that, what's that window actually look like? I don't know if our programs could be done in twelve, eighteen months. Probably be a lot longer.
Thrown out in years.
No, I know, I know, I just, I wanna be realistic too.
Yeah, exactly, we gotta be a realist about this and that's what we're here for.
That being said, if there, if there was a way to save costs by having one areas, areas of it not completed or that could be worked on, maybe that's a possibility, but maybe delay the full use of the building.
Yeah, and it starts to get complicated.
So Kevin, you've mentioned trying to rehab existing building. We left the greenhouse, tore down the existing headhouse, it's just a wood structure on a slab. Is there any benefit to having a slab there to build a structure on and connect with the existing greenhouse? Because that's just too complicated.
You're talking about the greenhouse foundation?
So the current greenhouse and then the room that's currently attached to, we call the headhouse, that's just a wood structure, wood framed structure built on to a slab. If that wood framed structure was gone and that slab became part of the foundation of the new building, is that beneficial at all?
Not really, I mean, we'd have to like modify the building to like fit onto that foundation.
Yeah, oh yeah.
So.
I don't think there's really any, any cost savings there.
Okay. I was just curious.
Plus, I think it's the slab slopes to drains and things like that, so it would, it would take work to get, even if it suited the building.
Okay, anything more to add anybody and then what's our next step? I see trying to work with this footprint and just shifting space around to better suit our needs and trying to fine tune our, our vision and maybe.
Can we give Kevin a list of some of our thoughts around option three?
Yeah, Shelby's been taking notes and I think you've heard everything that you were putting out.
Only question, I have.
And, but, you know, I understand, we're trying to, you know, create a little bit of maybe separation, you know, seemed to not be as important as, you know. But I, I still think that there's a certain way to lay out the building that would make it function best for everybody in the building. Wanna try and move around spaces so that we're working with the grades as much as we can and make some kind of under basement level storage space work under the building, that would be helpful.
My only other question would be back to the elevation and the grade work. I think the parking is not the big priority. I know it may have to require reworking that back road, could we shift the entire structure closer to this intersection? If we're moving the greenhouse anyways, does that make life easier?
And we have flexibility to move any of the roads that are dirt. Yeah, that would help with the grades.
So all, all this on what I'd say the backside, this is all dirt, right? There's no pavement back here.
We have flexibility.
And then across the front, it's a big pavement. So then Kevin and Shelby's task would be to maybe look at the grading closer and see how that's all gonna come together and the allocation of space based on what you've heard. Do you have enough to move forward in a sense or do you need additional info? You want some more feedback after they walk away and maybe think about it for a day and feed you more info or?
Yeah, I mean, if, if any questions come up, you know, in the process of reconfiguring the, the spaces here, we'll definitely be in touch. But I think that this has been great, it's good feedback.
What do you think for a window of our next meeting? You know, we're running out of October, we're going into November and we're in the summer.
Right, yeah, I didn't, I didn't show a schedule here because I didn't, it's not that it's not important, but I wanted to kind of get through this meeting to kind of see where we're at. And so next meeting we'll have a schedule, kind of a revised schedule to, to work with. I'm, you know, when is your next opportunity to meet?
The next board meeting is Tuesday, November fifteenth.
And we're trying to dovetail this all together to make it simpler to schedule meetings. I think this works great, the three and the five.
Yep.
You two, Mr. Kalyan?
Yes, sir.
Fifteenth, work?
Yeah.
Can you all say the fifteenth, David? That work for you, Kevin?
Brain clear.
Not anymore. And we have a contractual agreement or purchase order with you guys and how are we doing with, with our budget?
I'm glad you brought it up.
I'm trying to be a realist, Kevin.
You know, we, I think are required to like stay within a certain budget limit.
Yeah.
Thirty thousand is something that we are required by state law to stay under. So it's, it, you know, working with, well, I mean, if we're not working with the existing building, that kind of keeps it a little bit simpler. And so we're trying to stay on the same path, but there have been some wrinkles in the pathway. So I'm not asking for more money, but maybe we can modify the process going, you know, through the rest of the way. What are, what are we trying to get out of this as a final product, I guess? You know, because I, what I was imagining when we wrote the initial proposal was that we'd have floor plans, elevations, possibly a rendering of the building to kind of act as marketing material. What are, what are your thoughts on, on that?
Good question, let's put it out to the group. I hadn't, well, I actually have been thinking about that and, and where, where are we going with this? And, and obviously, as you know, as we move forward, we'd have to put this out for competitive architectural design proposals, blah, 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 you know the drill. And, but here we are paying for a service to get, doing what exactly what we're doing to get focused, to see what we can afford and what we envision. And we've had a lot of good dialogue here and so what you just said sounds great to me. If we can do that within our budget, anybody else?
I, I would say I'm okay if we don't get that far in the process, quite honestly. I don't know how much fundraising we'll be doing, or we need to have that rendering to, to try to sell to donors out there. I'm looking at the timeline as well with the grants and for a second, let's just assume that we get this big grant. That will be awarded in December, we've got three fiscal years, correct? This is fiscal year number one, which is, will be halfway over by the time we get this particular grant. I would like to start and evaporate into the grant as soon as possible, really go out to bid for the architecture services and so on and so forth, January, February. So my feeling was your services, Kevin, were ideal, this is what we needed to see, like we needed to have a visual for this team so we could discuss and debate the, the use of the, of the building, what are we talking about for rough estimates for the cost? So we can figure out a budget, I think we're very close on our budget, I'm feeling more comfortable today than I have over the last several months. I'm just wondering if you go into great detail under this particular.
Yeah, no, good point, valid point.
If you win the bid, great, if you wanna be the architect. But if you have, if you have to not be the, the architect that, that wins the bid, then that new firm is doing everything you just did. As far as a lot of the design work. And I just worried if that's difficult of services.
Well, I mean, you wouldn't be doing competitive cost, there would be qualifications there. So get whoever based on qualifications that you thought that met, that met your needs and negotiate costs after that. So that was one thing. I mean, we are absolutely interested in doing this, so I'm willing to take this a little bit farther than I think.
What I think Andy's point.
Get what you need.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Hey, I mean, you don't need marketing material if you're not trying to sell this for a grant or for public, you know, funding of, of the project. So, you know, we still do need to get a cost estimate, you know, so hopefully get through another round of floor plans, develop some, you know, some simple elevations of what the building could look like.
If we go to the city, don't think that.
Get a cost estimate from that.
Right, if we were looking for like a proposition two and a half over, I vote for the city to, to pay for this, I think we definitely need to have all that marketing material. I just don't see us crossing.
We're not crossing that bridge at this point.
Right, so I, I think the team that has to be convinced is this team right here, are we comfortable with the conceptual design? I think that's been the main focus.
I, I, I now agree with what Dr. Lincoln Hooker's saying in regards to that. We don't necessarily need you to go that next step and spend your real spending money on that. Let's focus on, on the nuts and bolts and getting a somewhat ballpark cost estimate. And, and I would think in the next couple meetings, we're there. Anybody agree, disagree? Okay?
I want February to be less conceptual, January, February to be less conceptual in actual decision-making and.
Sounds great.
Possible to break ground would be ideal, that'd be my hope.
On what you just said a little while ago about fundraising, I think we need to have a subcommittee in regards to just that focus and we're gonna incorporate B building, incorporate this problem, if we're gonna raise money, we're gonna put the whole thing together because I don't wanna do a piecemeal because you know, you get one bite of the apple. And so, but you and I can talk about that as well.
Okay, so in, in advance of like some of the planning for the classrooms and the offices, you know, it would be great if you guys could put together a wish list of, of teaching educational, you know, like equipment, whiteboards.
For that, you mean?
Whiteboards, you know, cabinets, sinks, anything like that, if you could put together a list of what ideally you would want in these classrooms, that would be really helpful. I can guess, but, but if we, if we can try and, you know, make it efficient in what's in the classrooms, you know, even, even lighting, you know, what do you need for lighting, you want LEDs on dimmers? Do you want, you know, a smart, a, a screen like this in every classroom or do you, can you get away with something, what would it last?
We had chalkboards before, is that where you're getting it?
I know you don't want chalkboards.
No, he likes chalkboards.
In the nineteen seventies paneling on the wall.
No.
Well, that's, yeah, can you do someone nodding fine somewhere?
No, maybe your classroom, but not mine.
Rustic, rustic, all right.
When you're talking about equipment, whiteboards and classroom materials, are you talking about that being embedded in the cost? What was the purpose of asking for that?
Even if they're not in the cost, we need to prepare for them and I wanna make sure that we're describing the outlets and the data lines and whatever in a way that lets the cost estimate or know what we're, what we're after.
For, for his M E, M E P cost estimates. And what you're referring to could be considered what they call furnishings and equipment. And that could maybe come out of our construction budget and we'd have to pay for that elsewhere.
But we need to have the infrastructure.
So the grant, we're talking grant, I mean, okay, so what we're referring to is with this big grant, of the five million, one and a half million is for equipment, three and a half million is for the facility upgrades. In that one and a half million piece of pie, some of that are the, I think you provided some of the course on.
Tables, desks, closets.
Yeah, right, so we have, hopefully have covered the grant.
Right.
But you'll need to have details of what are we asking for so you can sort of design the pattern.
Yeah.
So if you have that list.
If it's not there, we can't use it.
Right, right.
All right, so the list, you provided, Melanie, so between one of you, if we can get that list, we can send it off to you and then you'll see what we're asking for with the grant.
We would have to add to that because he said a couple, keyed in on a couple things for teaching, like in the headhouse, I would want a, if we can fit it, a three bay, a three sink stainless steel with size for processing produce and stuff, you know what I mean? So, yeah, there's some things that we would want in there that you would need to know about.
Well, like Kevin said, he could pass if he didn't get that info, but it would be better if he had the info.
He now knows at least one.
And Shelby, you know, we can still, you know, if you put together a list, we can start putting together a, a space, a space program. And that helps to kind of build the information that we give for the cost estimate and whoever the designer is, hopefully.
All right, let's, let's release Kevin and his associate Shelby. I had some more agenda items for a subcommittee that wasn't just for this building.
Thank you, Kevin.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kevin.
They care, Shelby.
If you had, depending on how these turn space wise, if you can have a separate. Because we wanna keep it out of the dusty area. I was talking about the simulators, I forgot the footprint for those, like, was it you that we talked, that I talked about having a, a separate space behind a classroom or something?
Yeah, it's almost like a labs space that they have in English, I can, like language classrooms.
Tim.
You have the main classroom and then you have the lab space.
Tim, can you circle back?
Yeah, yeah, I just got some.
All right.
Language labs, for like Spanish classroom stuff, they have the.
Property Subcommittee, yes, this is our, one of our, obviously our top focus is this architecture project. But we also have a lot of property and a lot of issues and a lot of moving parts. And I'd like to keep all those things on the radar and not let them slip through due to the fact we've got bigger fish to fry in a sense. I met with Andy earlier going over things and getting up to date and I tried to do this, well, I hadn't been, done it since a month ago, but I like to do it every couple of weeks just to keep fresh with things. We talked some about the animal science building progress and was brought up to date, interior walls are demoed. Tim's been working with Deets Architects, some working drawings, hopefully classrooms ready for, by February. Vision to create animal companion program still on the radar. And then we have the issue with the nursery pig barn space. Tim recommends tearing down and build metal building and students outfit and.
A couple, I can, a couple updates since that got.
Oh, great, so that's that one, so why don't you jump in? So why don't you jump in?
So we had a property renovation planning meeting, whatever, too many times. We met with Tim, we met with Chad. He and Tim will be prepared to have material available, it's coming Monday for the framing of the walls. Working with Chad on what that will look like. That's the update there. The update on the pig barns, nursery barn, slab, Victor and I spoke about the slab that's right there. It looks like the recommendation, it is not suitable. It's a video on the current slab, we'll probably have to pull the slab out and start over.
Okay. All right, so that's well in the works and also on the radar. Then we talked about what's coined, and this is an old term, I'm understanding, the apple storage area, which the automotive shop storage is above. Floor joists need replacement, bids received, low bidder, the DCAM certificate expired, so.
There was a little, I'd have to go back to what, did it expire the day after we opened the bids? But the high bidder brought in the attorney general's office because he's saying you can't accept it, you have to throw out the little bidder. So attorney, so there was a lot of back and forth, but it looks like we're going to have to, we'd have to accept the high bidder forty thousand more on top of what was already a hundred thousand more than we estimated. So at this point, we can, we have to have Joe Cook from the city say, okay, you can throw out the bids, write the, I'd have to have him write the letter and we're either re-advertise again.
Right.
And I think we would re-advertise as the same construction project, but put it in four different alternate bids. You know, first alternate bid is fix the building and make it structurally safe for the students and storage. And then the second alternate would be do the roof over, third would be do the siding over, and the fourth would be.
And who's the design professional handling this project?
Roy Brown.
Roy, okay. So you had that conversation with him about the alternates?
Not with Roy, I had, I had, I wrote an email the other night to Joe Cook and Crystal. I'm sure Roy would, I mean, what that alternate is going to do is protect us on how much money we think it's going to have so much. And so we can take what's mostly important and then kind of work out.
So has the attorney general ruled that the low bidder is not qualified at this point?
There's an argument because he had submitted his renewal application to the state August fourth. It's written right on his DCAM application and the state hasn't done anything with it. So it's been sitting there and they, I guess they just call around contract or call people up and do referrals, right? Or just.
Well, they have to process it and recertify him, but if his certificate was active or in effect during the day of the bid, he should be okay. If it expired after the bid, that doesn't matter. I mean, he was certified at the day of the bid.
The way I read that email sounded like the attorney general's office, at first it knew you have to throw that out. And then later on, it sounded like you can keep it. It was kind of, so I, so it's up to us to call DCAM and see where he is exactly because he's not on the list. If you look for his number, you don't see the DCAM list.
All right, so who's going to take care? Is Joe working on that to?
Tomorrow, we're going to talk about it.
Shake that out and figure out which direction we're going in.
Right.
We're going to create this, put it back out to bid with whatever number of alternates and so forth and so on.
We just have to make sure we don't just throw it out and someone can come back at us with a lawsuit.
Right, no, absolutely.
So he's going to decide that. And then as far as funds worth, we should blow out all the finishes.
What are we talking for size of projects, Tim?
Size.
The dollar, dollar value.
I think the high bid was two hundred and fifty-four thousand. And it started out at a hundred and fifty thousand, that was the estimate.
So Roy's estimate when he advertised, it was one fifty?
No, no, when I asked for funds, when we originally went out and asked the city for capital money, I think we're looking at the buildings and that's what I asked, I need to know, I need a number to ask the city and that's what it was at the time.
All right.
But that was like right before COVID hit and everything kind of stopped. People got sick, everything went wide away and.
All right, so this has been in the works for a while?
Yeah.
Okay. Couple of years. Bert's Pits, Bert Pitts Greenhouse, reskinned, being used as.
Storage right now because the farm roof leaks so bad. So brought in all the hay we could put in there and I did try to get the carpentry teachers to do that as a project for the kids because we had most of the material, but they're having enough work, I think we're going to just poke away at it.
So the reskinned portions closer to the road, that building set back, what type of structure is it?
So that used to be the old hospital dairy farm. So it was a cinder block, three sided wall building and then cows just ran in. So that's where we keep all our round bales and the farm puts some hay with them.
Okay, and what's the roof structure?
Just a gorgid, no.
That's what I thought.
And so all the nails were pulling out, we went up and resealed them and they just keep moving, they just keep sleeping. So I think that must, that is the original roof, so.
So is this something we're going to try to repair in-house?
We already started, the guy started building the wall on the end of it, the building, because that wall, that cinder block part had fallen off years ago. So we sealed up the one end.
Say the guys, your crew, the farm techs?
Yeah.
The farm crew, okay. And is that, so what's the goal there? Get this done by the end of the year? Type of, or is it a filler? When did he get to it?
It is a filler. I mean, I still think it'd be a great job for the kids because you don't have to build a roof that one, they can go down fifty feet, stop and we'll tarp the scene. But, so we're going to try to fill it in if we can, but I'm not sure, I don't have time.
So what does admin think about what Tim just suggested about the kids doing some of the work?
Currently Carpentry is dedicated to Habitat. We've had some issues and had to pull back one week of Habitat for right now, so he only has every other week. They're trying to get that all closed up before winter.
So they're not available?
Not available. The other groups are going to be doing the, they're going to be starting the renovation down in the back.
Right.
So maybe once that's completed and that's done, may, you know, since it's a filler, the spring might have a different opportunity for the carpentry students.
All right, so barn building at Bert's Pit roof needs work and you're trying to deal with it as best you can essentially. And you're on your own at this point by the sounds of it.
Yeah, it's a lower priority project.
Yeah, understood. Okay. Working on it. All right, I happened to bring up the compost operation. I understand that was rather labor intensive, didn't really work, couldn't control some of the stuff coming in from outside our, our operation, but still being used for our internally generated food scraps?
Right now, the process, we're just going to take it right out of the kitchens. We haven't started that process yet. We still take the manure, we take all the city leaves that they want to put up there. There's still a pile left to spread on the fields, that's what we do with it now.
Okay.
It's a tough program to maintain if you take outside sources just because of the DCAM minutes.
Yes.
So when the city still had the dump, it was easy, just run it up. Anything, when you were done on the screening, you could just take all that over and then just throw it right up at the dump free. But now we're going to truck it out. It's twenty-five hundred dollars, a thirty yard box to get rid of it, so.
So it's just the kitchens?
Yeah.
Culinary and cafeteria right now.
Okay. And our favorite other project, the forestry building, the VA property or our property essentially, thank to Mr. Kaling's dad. Any activity going on at site or is that just?
Not currently running through exploratory and stuff like that. I take the kids up there to do some tree ID and, but we're not doing anything with the equipment, with the new equipment. And this winter, when the ground freezes up and we're doing chainsaws, we're going to start ripping up the rest of the overgrown Christmas tree lot and prep for this moving stuff in the spring so that the kids will be using the equipment up there.
Okay.
Right now, it's just storage.
Can you actually step road and get in and out with a bus or?
Yeah, we can come up from, by across from Scotty's.
Right.
It's a little bumpy.
Yep.
Got to miss a few rocks here or there, but.
Do you want that graded better?
It would be good for our vehicle to fill it up.
I mean, we put that on the project first.
Yeah, we're trying to, everybody, trying to keep all our properties in focus and not lose sight of what we have and what we're trying to manage. And I feel, to me, it's important that we keep this sort of stuff on the radar. You know, we have, we have a lot of resources and as Andy mentioned, maybe too many and not a good thing, but we do have them and we got to figure out what to do with them or think about maybe getting rid of some of them, I don't know.
Tim, what's your thoughts? I know one time you talked about using bulldozer to grade that, yes, no?
Yeah, I think the road itself is packed hard enough, you never get harder, so just bringing some road pack. And that's something that the kids can do.
Well, what about taking the bulldozer, that's their best piece of equipment? I mean, a road grader probably be better, but I don't think we have one. And taking the crown out and scraping the crown and then it goes into the gully where the wheels are.
You're just going to pick up boulders.
You're just going to, as you do that, you're just going to uncover boulders?
Yeah, we've tried that at one point closer along the field and it just kept bringing up boulders after boulder and made more of a mess.
So your thought is bring up some dense grade, dense pack, whatever, the manufactured blacktop and the millings and stuff and filling in the low spots?
Yep, have ten wheels come in, the kids can grade it, push it back, you know, and then just that, they'll pack it down just with the driving on it, right?
That's something that's feasibly get in on the schedule in the next, whatever, this school year?
Oh, we could work on it this school year and if we're not having to change the grade, you know, we could do that, you know, as long as we get material that doesn't freeze in the middle of winter, you know, with the work on it.
But I know we have one project we're working on here and then after that, we can work on the road up there. But if this stuff's up there, once we get the equipment, we can start a little at a time, we're chipping away at the road.
Okay, is that something you guys can communicate about and do? And is it okay with admin to?
It's all funding, right, come down to funding. So that would be, so we get, we try to get, use the road base that power paving makes because it packs pretty hard. And, but their site will shut down.
Where do you get that?
East Hampton.
East Hampton plant?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But that plant will shut down for coming up maybe next month and then I don't know if we can get it out of Sunderland, but then the trucking just gets ramped up, spiked up now. But we can definitely do it.
So do you have the truck to go get the material? They would deliver, so you have the delivery cost.
Yeah.
And if you went to Sunderland, what Warner Brothers?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm just getting these issues out there and seeing what we can do about them.
I mean, it doesn't have to be funded to do it all at once. I mean, just to get down from the top of that first hill corner. Right, that's probably the worst section. Yeah. You have some stuff there, or is that's more gravel for the? No, it's the other corner. Right, the base, that's the road base. Oh, that is, okay. Yeah. So I mean, we can start doing some stuff, but you know, I think this project's got to come before that one.
What's this project?
Doing the road.
The roads to New York.
Go down the Apple Orchard.
Okay. Now, I did not have that one on my list. Apple Orchard Road?
How long has that one been on the to-do list?
Well, we've always maintained it, but we worked hard at it last spring until we had a little disruption. I kind of took the wheels off the car.
All right, so that's something you're currently working on and what similar thing, grading it?
Materials there is on site already.
That just needs a little more extensive grade adaptation so it drains well. The one at the woodlot was made very well by the contractor that built it, it just wasn't maintained.
All right.
So when the Orchard Road will be done?
Well, it'll be gone next week, but we'll work on how I'm going to be able to get back.
I'm just saying, the board's going to put pressure on me to get these projects done.
Well, I'd like to have it done before it freezes, make sure it don't take very long because we did a lot of the drainage work last spring.
So hopefully this fall.
And all the materials here and the equipment's here, it's easier. The working pieces are.
All right, and then I see the.
And that's a junior, senior project or just senior?
Both, both grades.
Okay.
But the juniors have been working with the, some of them have worked, they've been learning the equipment and they've also been working with the freshmen. So they've kind of been away, but now the exploratory, they'll have a little more time to, so the seniors probably have more work done.
And then I see the R and R trailers on site? Full of windows?
Apparently, yes.
Apparently.
I have the right one.
And so what's the schedule there, Tim?
Christmas, vacation, February and April.
Since you were talking about the woodlot, the VA is building some kind of security fence around its entire property and it appears they've taken out the gate that we use to share with them to access our property. I don't know if they're going to replace it with a gate or if it's going to be a fence, but they probably didn't know that.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I, you know, I always had the thought we shouldn't be driving through the hospital, even maybe years ago it was pretty casual, but now it's.
Well, and that might not be an option if they're putting a fence, there might be a checkpoint Charlie somewhere you can't get in to get to that spot, but.
So I'm unfamiliar with the way you're accessing it. I would just drive up, well, from across from Scotty's.
Yeah, so if you entered through the VA and passed, there used to be a row of brick houses on the left.
Yep, yep.
There was a cut through by the last two houses that went straight into our property and it was a straight shot to that new building. There was a road out to a gate, the road's still there. And that was a shorter distance to get into the woodlot, especially in winter time.
When I first started, that's the way we used to enter until the cell company finished the new road, the road in from Scotty's, we never went in that way. So once the new road was in, then we started going that way.
Okay, that's, I'd never knew this other road existed.
It's one big loop around basically, from like, from resigning to the VA through the woodlot.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, they've been doing a ton of work up there and they were going to shut the place down. You figured that one out. How about the water and electricity up to this, to the forestry building?
I haven't heard back from Mike Schaefer on that one yet. He was supposed to send me the proposal.
Can you check into that?
I sent him an email at the truck calls office today.
All right, great. Okay.
And then there's the air conditioning project for C building.
Oh, where are the windows going in, Tim?
A and B building.
A and B?
Yeah.
And then the AC for building C?
Yeah. So we're going to put split systems in. And then the city came in and reviewed our plans because it needs to be more energy efficient. And trying to make these new boilers be as efficient as possible. They want us to make the wall packs be the primary heat source, which ends up being the problem because the unit ventilators are constantly running, but in that 10% fresh air all the time. So how can you let in the middle of the winter cold air come in or go over a coil that has water in it, but you're not moving hot water, it's just sitting there. So we've been working with our control company to come up with a plan to integrate everything, tie up all the parts together. Like this building is all electronic and everything is working together on one system.
This would be, you say one system, like one control platform?
Right, so like you can, heating and exhaust supply and everything is on one program and you can manipulate it all. Over there, right now, the heating system's on one system, but each room is independent and you don't have control over each room. And then that, the wall packs and mini splits are going to, would just be another completely separate system and each room is on their own.
Yeah, and those are ductless, right? They're just, the air around. Yeah, and those are ductless, right, just wind air around from the room.
Right, so it's gonna mean pulling wires everywhere, back, back to a control.
All right, so that's well in the works, being worked out?
Yeah, I'm hoping that we'll start that in, in maybe February or April, or maybe now that we've had this little glitch from the city. It may be put on, but.
Well, what I'm hearing, hopefully it's a good glitch, meaning more energy efficient.
Oh, yeah, 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 it's gonna happen when, when the forestry building gets built, they're gonna, they're gonna sit in and look over the design.
All right.
And it's gonna be mostly, they're gonna want electricity, they want everything electrical, huh?
Yeah, that's what I'm hearing, even, even the work I'm doing as a project rep, the state on these housing projects are moving everything to electrical. And that's, that's the trend. Okay.
And sidewalks. So they came in, he did a crap load of elevation and I, I need the plan, but I haven't seen, I haven't seen that company come up with it yet, give me a, that's Mike Schaefer, but that's his surveying crew who's here. I think they got held up, they didn't get the work done.
You got, this is money from the city that we get to spend at our discretion type of thing, would you call it?
Capital improvement.
Capital improvement, okay.
I wish it was discretion.
Well, well, you, you have to petition for it or, or submit for it and you get a certain amount?
So every, every, the new rule now is every capital improvement project you submit, you have to describe or tell how that's gonna be better for the environment, more cost effective and you have to write a narrative up on that and everything.
Okay. What else, Tim?
I know there's something else, I can't think of it right now.
Well, I had one, but I don't think it's a big, well, eventually a priority, chip activated entry doors, did they kind of somewhere?
I know, but that's, Josh is working on that, I have new ones for the, the shop doors, if we had some old entry ways you guys have in here, is that just never really worked. I have new ones, the guy put one in and then went on vacation for two weeks and was supposed to program it for me, but of course that didn't work. But that, but that is another entry with a fob they can lock up and I think we're gonna set it up that they'll unlock at seven in the morning, they lock automatically at two thirty in the afternoon. Then they can use their fob until five thirty and then they have to walk around through the main way in the building with their key to work.
Okay. All right, I guess let's wrap it up, I mean, we did a lot today.
Well, I was telling Mike, we're looking, working with the city, taking some of our land and putting in planting pollinator plants in there. So like Cross from Scotty Drive and Range is a place we're gonna look for, for the schools portion and that hillside by across from the DPW, the old state DPW. And there's a part of, on Burt's Pit Road below the parking lot, it used to be corn years ago, we're looking at that too, but I think we're primarily gonna offer up that site across from Scotty's.
That, that Weddige Field there?
Yeah, but.
So what is this?
It's part of the Energy and Conservation Committee, I don't know why we have a subcommittee, but I'm on it to looking for it, pollinators, seed. But it's a pretty expensive seed, so I think we're just, whatever the funding they can raise, we'll probably just do strips of it at a time, but.
And how does the school say benefit from any of this?
It doesn't at all.
Good faith? We take good faith out of it?
It'll look good, we wanna put a sign up.
The bees are happy.
There you go. It's land we never use, we just have to brush hog it and once you establish these, these plants, you don't have to, you don't, you don't brush hog it every year, you let it go every two or three years and then you, you know, keep your bases down and the wooddy plants out, so.
Okay. Ready to adjourn? Deb says yes. Or can James say yes?
Thank you.
Hi, Deb.